Welcome to the Muskogee Creek National Council Session. Bali Ho Colin is Hoke Logag Inauguration. Please stand for the posting of the colors by Muskogee Nation Honor Guard.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, undivisible with liberty and justice for all. But oh, you may be seated. At this time, I would like to present to you the Muskogee Creek National Council Representatives of Bali Ho Colin Es Hoke Logag Session for 2022-2023.
Representatives of the Ophuski District, CA Representative Randall Hicks, CB Representative Sandra Golden escorted by his, by her nephew, James Tiger.
CB Representative Sandra Golden escorted by her nephew, James Tiger. Representatives of the McIntosh District, CA Representative Darryl Proctor escorted by his daughter Amberly Proctor. CB Representative Galen Cloud escorted by his mother Lucy Cloud.
Representatives of the Creek District, CA Representative Joseph Hicks is attending virtually. CB Representatives Patrick Freeman Junior escorted by his wife Cynthia Freeman. Representatives.
Representatives of the Muskogee District, CA Representative Mary Crawford is attending virtually. CB Representative Joyce C. Dear is attending virtually.
Representatives of the Awogee District, CA Representative William Low escorted by his wife Elsa Low. CB Representative Nelson Harjo Senior escorted by his sons Nelson Harjo Junior and Julian Harjo.
Representatives of the Takabachi District, CA Representative Anna Marshall is attending virtually. CB Representative Thomas Senior Holla Osborne is escorted by her father Thomas Yehola.
Representatives of the Tulsa District, CA Representative Robert Huff escorted by his daughter Lauren Buchi. CB Representative Leonard Gouge escorted by his wife Joanna Gouge.
Representatives of the Wagner Rogers Mays District, CA Representative Charles McHenry escorted by his daughter Isabella Becaro. CB Representative Mark Randolph escorted by Rena Bell White Cloud.
Now I would like to introduce you to your, to you Speaker Randall Hicks of the Bali Ho Colin Es Hoke Logag Session. Speaker Randall Hicks, will you come forward, please?
Thank you, Council. You can, you can go ahead and sit. Please be seated. Good morning and welcome. As I stated, I am Randall Hicks, Speaker of the 21st Session of the Muskogee Creek National Council. At this time, I call to order the special session of the 22nd Session of the Muskogee Creek National Council, January 15th, 2022. Time is? Ten ten. At this time, I'd like to ask Representative Charles McHenry to do the invocation, please. So please stand if you can. Amen. Thank you, Representative McHenry. This time, I'd like to introduce a few dignitaries that we do have present. Principal Chief David W. Hill, please stand and be recognized. His wife Monica Hill is also present. Second Chief Dale Bieber. Muskogee Creek Nation Princess Claudia McHenry. And? Former Speaker and National Counsel Thomas Yehola. I missed anybody, I apologize. At this time, Supreme Court Justice Amos McNack will conduct the oath of the Office of the National Council Membership.
After I, y'all, would state your name, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. And do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the office National Council Representative of the Muskogee Creek Nation. And I will, to the best of my ability, uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Muskogee Creek Nation.
I uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Muskogee Creek Nation.
Congratulations.
Alrighty. I'll take a little bit of time here and just say thank you to everybody that's in attendance and to everybody that is watching live stream. Been a wild two years of many obstacles that came for the council, for the tribe, chief, for everybody. But as Muskogee Creek citizens, we did what we did and we moved forward and we're still here today and we're still making progress. So just wanted to say that. In accordance with Article 6, Section 2D of the Constitution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, we will now conduct the election of the Speaker who will preside over the Muskogee Creek National Council for the 22nd Session, 2022 and 2023. The floor is open for nominations of the Speaker of the 22nd Session of the National Council. Representative McHenry. Representative McHenry has nominated Mark Randolph. Thanks, Speaker Proctor. Representative Proctor has nominated William Low. Any other nominations? Hearing none, entertain a motion for nominations to cease. Representative Proctor made a motion for nominations to cease. Do I have a second?
Representative Marshall, second.
Representative McHenry. Okay, all in favor for that motion, so you can follow by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. And then motion carries. At this time, the National Council staff will present ballots to the representatives and a written vote shall be conducted. For those National Council Representatives attending virtually, voting will be conducted by text message to the National Council Secretary to maintain secret voting. Once the National Council Secretary receives the vote by text message, the National Council Secretary shall show the text to the designated Muskogee Creek Supreme Court Justice attending the proceedings and the justice shall write the name on the paper ballot and place in the, in the bowl there. At this time, Justice Amos McNack will be conducting the election portions of today's proceedings. W. Low? Low? Randolph? Low? Low? Will Low? Randolph? Mark Randolph? Will Low? 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 Randolph? Randolph? Low? Low? Congratulations, William Low. You have been selected as the Speaker for the 20 second session. Please come forward and be sworn in as a new Speaker.
State your name, repeat after me, raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye, William Low.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the office.
Will faithfully execute the office.
Of Speaker of the National Council.
Speaker of the National Council.
Of the Muskogee Creek Nation.
Muskogee Creek Nation.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Will, to the best of my ability.
uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Muskogee Creek Nation.
uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Muskogee Creek Nation.
Congratulations.
This time, I'd like to say a few words to my fellow council members and the attendants here in the audience and on Zoom. My fellow council representatives, thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to working with each of you in your respective districts. Speaker of the National Council, my goal is to advocate for all citizens, be accountable to our responsibilities, uphold the Constitution and work alongside the executive and judicial branches of our tribal government to ensure the health, wealth, and prosperity of our great Muskogee Nation. I'm thankful for this opportunity and look forward to making all of you proud, but oh. I appreciate it, thank you. At this time, I would like to open the floor for nominate, for nominations for the Office of the Second Speaker of the 22nd Session of the National Council.
Mr. Speaker, this is, this is Representative Anna Marshall.
Representative McHenry has nominated Representative Robert Huff. Representative Freeman. Representative Patrick Freeman has nominated Representative Darryl Proctor. Any other nominations? Do I have a motion to cease all nominations? Representative McHenry makes a motion to cease all nominations, seconded by Representative Sandy Golden. Voice of vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. At this time, the staff will present ballots to the representatives and a written vote shall be conducted. All Zoom nominations will be via text message.
One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven, eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen. Sixteen. Robert Huff. Robert Huff. D. Proctor. Robert Huff. Robert Huff. D. Proctor. Huff. 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 Proctor. Proctor. Uh. Proctor. Proctor. Proctor.
Ladies and gentlemen, your Speaker for the 22nd Session for the National Council is Representative Robert Huff. Representative Huff, please come to the, to the podium to swear in, good sir.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Robert Huff.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the office.
Will faithfully execute the office.
Of the Second Speaker of the National Council.
Of the National Council.
Of the Muskogee Creek Nation.
Of the Muskogee Creek Nation.
And will. In will to the best of my ability.
In will to the best of my ability.
Oppose the Constitution and the laws of the Muskogee Creek Nation.
Oppose the laws of the Muskogee Creek Nation.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Representative Huff. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for nominees for Sergeant at Arms.
Speaker, this is Mary Crawford. I nominate Representative Joe Hicks.
Representative Huff nominates Representative Thomas Senior Holla Osborne. Representative Sandy Golden.
Speaker.
Representative Sandy Golden nominates Representative Randall Hicks. Any other nominations? Representative McHenry. Representative McHenry makes a motion to cease all nominations, seconded by Representative Scotty Harjo. Vote all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Speaker.
Nominations have been ceased on the floor. At this time, the staff will present ballots to the representatives and a written vote shall be conducted. Ladies and gentlemen, we did receive a late nomination after the vote was already ceased. The nominations were ceased on the floor. So for the record, the nominations were ceased on the floor by the time we received that nomination.
Anna? Can you hear me? This is Zeke. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Ladies and gentlemen, waiting on two votes, so Madoff, for your patience.
I was gonna, I don't know if it'll work. I was thinking maybe you could text Alicia and say that you want to make a motion to reopen nominations, but I don't know if it's gonna work. But obviously, they don't seem to be able to hear us.
I know because I tried to nominate Darrell and I couldn't get through. And when we were trying to tell.
I'd text.
And when I.
I'd text Alicia.
She didn't text you back?
No. Then I tried to call.
And when we were doing our oath, I repeated it. I don't even know if they even got it.
I heard it. Does that count?
Oh, you did? Oh, okay.
They can't hear us. They cannot hear us.
No.
They need to reopen the nominations. Because it was done first. Mary, you did yours first.
So does that mean Joe Hicks's name didn't go in?
I don't think so.
Yes. They're waiting on our two votes.
Or are they waiting on my vote? Because I just wrote in.
Yes, Anna, can you please mute your microphone, please?
Oops. Yes, they can.
Speaker?
Yes, Representative Dear.
There were some nominations made and evidently you couldn't hear us.
Yes, ma'am. By the time we received the nomination, the floor, the nominations on the floor had been ceased.
But they were done at the beginning. They were done first. They were over those others.
Yes, ma'am. By the time we received it, the nominations had ceased. Mr. Fletcher, do you have any guidance for us on this matter, sir?
Well, Speaker, I guess, obviously, this is an interesting situation. I can say, just because I was listening on the Zoom, that I heard the motion at the same time the other motions were being made. You know, for whatever reason, the audio was not available to those there at the complex. If no votes, if there are still votes outstanding, I guess it's, in theory, possible if there was a motion to reopen nominations that since not all votes have yet been received, it is possible to reopen nominations and kind of start the process over.
Very well. Madoff, Mr. Fletcher. At this time, do I have a nomination to reopen voting? The nominations? Representative Darrell Proctor takes a motion to reopen the nominations. They're seconded by Representative McHenry. Voice of vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now reopen the nominations for Sergeant at Arms. Yes, Representative Huff. Representative Robert Huff nominates Thomas Senior Holla Osborne.
Speaker, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
If this is Representative Crawford, I nominate Joe Hicks.
Representative Crawford nominates Representative Joe Hicks. Representative Golden. Representative Golden nominates Representative Randall Hicks. Is there any other nominations? Their motion to cease nominations on the floor. Representative Harjo makes a motion to cease all nominations on the floor, seconded by Second Speaker Robert Huff. Voice of vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All nominations have been ceased. At this time, the nominations are Representative Thomas Senior Holla Osborne, Representative Joe Hicks, and Representative Randall Hicks.
Thomas Senior Holla. Osborn. Randall Hicks. Thomas Senior Osborn. Jay Hicks. Jay Hicks. Jay Hicks. Thomas Senior Osborn. Jay Hicks. Hicks. Randall Hicks. Joe Hicks. Jay Hicks. Thomas Senior Osborn. Thomas Senior Osborn. Joe Hicks. Randall Hicks.
To talk to Representative for Sergeant at Arms are Thomas Senior Holla Osborne and Joseph Hicks. That's the ballot. We will now do a second vote and hand out the ballot with those two representatives on the floor. Representative Thomas Senior Holla Osborne and Representative Joseph Hicks. And again, everyone, Madoff, for your patience. I know this is a lengthy process, but we appreciate your patience.
Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen. Sixteen. Hicks. Hicks. Osborn. 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 Hicks. 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 Osborn. Thomas Senior Holla. Osborn. Hicks. 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 Osborn.
Council Representative, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we will conduct a by-name vote with all the council representatives here in attendance and online. Council Representative, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we will conduct a by-name vote with all the council representatives here in attendance and online. When I call your name, if you're in attendance, please stand up and say the representative you would like to select for Sergeant at Arms. Representative Galen Cloud. You heard that? Basically, okay. Representative Joyce Dear.
Joe Hicks.
Representative Patrick Freeman, Jr. Representative Sandra Golden. Representative Leonard Gouge. Representative Nelson Harjo, Senior. Thomas Senior. Representative Joseph Hicks.
Joe Hicks.
Representative Randall Hicks. Second Speaker Robert Huff. Representative Anna Marshall.
Joe Hicks.
Representative Charles McHenry. Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Representative Daryl Proctor. Representative Mark Huff, excuse me, good Lord, Rock, Mark Randolph. I'm sitting here reading Robert's name. I'm so sorry. Sorry about that, Representative Randolph. Representative Osborne. Representative Mary Crawford.
Joe Hicks.
That's my vote. Representative Joseph Hicks. Another tie. Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Fletcher, could we please get your guidance on the next step in this election, sir?
Ye- yes, sir, Speaker. Um, uh, I, I suppose if either of the, the nominees are, are unwilling to step aside, um, it's a bit arcane, but certainly things like drawing straws and flipping a coin are possible. Um, you know, the, the, the rules don't specifically provide, uh, uh, like, as an avenue to resolve this, so. Those are not the best, uh, choices, but, uh, like I said, if nobody is willing to step aside, you could always elect to revote, uh, one more time to see if there's anybody, uh, willing to change their vote, but, um, may have to resort to, uh, basically a coin flip of some sort.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. At this time, would any of the nominations like to step aside their nomination? There are no volunteers. We'll do one more vote. Voice of vote. Again, the two nominations are Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne and Representative Joe Hicks. We'll go in the same order as last time, Representatives. Representative Galen Cloud. Representative Galen Cloud votes for Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Representative Joyce Dear.
Joe Hicks.
Representative Dear votes for Joe Hicks. Representative Patrick Freeman, Jr. Representative Gouge. Representative Gouge votes for Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Representative Nelson Harjo, Senior. Representative Harjo, Senior. Votes for Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Representative Joe Hicks.
Joe Hicks.
Representative Hicks votes for Joe Hicks. Representative Randall Hicks. Representative Randall Hicks votes for Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Second Speaker Robert Huff. Second Speaker Robert Huff votes for Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Representative Anna Marshall.
Joe Hicks.
Representative Anna Marshall votes for Joe Hicks. Representative Charles McHenry. Representative McHenry votes for Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne votes for Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Representative Daryl Proctor. Representative Proctor votes for Representative Joe Hicks. Representative Mark Randolph. Representative Mark Randolph votes for Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Representative Mary Crawford.
Joe Hicks.
Representative Crawford votes for Representative Joe Hicks. My vote's for Representative Joe Hicks. We have another tie, eight and eight. Mr. Fletcher. We're down to a, I believe we are down to a coin toss, sir.
Uh, it appears so, Speaker. Um, I suppose if there's any of their suggestions from, uh, National Council reps, um, kind of, all things are on the table at this point.
Is there any suggestions from any national council representatives for a solution? If not, I'd like to call Justice McNack up and do the coin flip. Does that seem appropriate? I don't have any coins on me. I'm pretty broke. When we begin the coin flip, we will ask Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne to make the coin flip call. If you could come to the microphone, please, Representative Hola Osborne. Tips it up if you could tell us what lands on heads or tails.
It's.
The coin flip is aheads. Ladies and gentlemen, Thomas Senior Hola Osborne is your next Sergeant at Arms. Representative Hola Osborne, if you could come swear in, please.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the office.
That I will faithfully execute the office.
Of Sergeant at Arms of the National Council.
Of the Sergeant of Arms of the National Council.
Of the Muskogee Creek Nation.
The Muskogee Creek Nation.
In a will to the best of my ability.
In a will to the best of my ability.
Abol the Constitution and the laws of the Muskogee Creek Nation.
Abol the Constitution, laws, and Muskogee Creek Nation.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience. I wouldn't expect 2022 to start any different than this bizarre turn of events in this, in this, uh, inauguration. Other business. In accordance with Article Six, Section Four B, the National Council in session is to determine the rules of procedures. In order to regulate and maintain directions of proceedings, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the rules of procedures currently utilized for 2022 and 2023 until such time that the council has reviewed and amended such. We'll have a motion. Second Speaker Robert Huff makes that motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Randall Hicks. Discussion. Any discussion? Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you're all the same, any opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Rules and procedures as currently written are hereby adopted until such time they are reviewed and amended by the council. On to announcements. Are there any announcements from the National Council? No announcements? Would like to say congratulations, everybody, all the new council representatives, welcome. Second Speaker Robert Huff, Sergeant at Arms, Thomas Senior Hola Osborne, congratulations. And again, it was a bizarre turn of events, but we wouldn't expect anything else for this year. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to, made by Rep, or excuse me, Second Speaker Robert Huff, seconded by Representative Nelson Harjo, Senior. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
We are now, that motion passes, we are now adjourned at 11:04 a.m. Don't have a gavel, so there will be a reception following the East Lobby. At this time, I would like to ask Representative Anna Marshall to do the invocation, please.
Thank you, Speaker. As the Speaker said, uh, we should be prepared for any challenges ahead that are unexpected and all the turns that we do, that we do them together. Uh, let us pray with confidence. Almighty and everlasting Creator in God, we thank you for the power that you give us each and every day and all the blessings that you bestow upon us. Through your strength, we can overcome any obstacles that stands in the way of what you would have us achieve. And thank you for giving us a clear understanding of the issues we are, that we will be facing and a clear purpose for what we do about them. And remind each of us of our individual responsibilities in the days ahead and make our way clear as we travel along different paths. And as we come to the close of this day, we just ask that we all leave with grace and peace and with the mercy of God. Amen.
Amen. We are adjourned, mad oh, Representative Anna Marshall for the benediction. East Lobby will have refreshments. Thank you all for attending.